Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is item number two, Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Let's see here. I've got speakers here. I'm wondering if they'd like to go now or wait till the item is called. Let me look to the audience, actually. I can see, I see my friends in the back. Anne, Jana, would you like to wait till the item's called? Would you like to come now?
You want to wait?
You want to wait? Okay, sounds good. Just wanted to double-check. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Let me just see also, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on any of the agenda items? If so, please get my attention now. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing and I will move on to item 3A, which is Tempe Center for the Arts Program Plan Update. And I see Brendan and Eileen coming forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Hi. You make me feel like a celebrity.
Brendan Ross, deputy community services director, arts and culture.
And Eileen May, general manager for the Tempe Center for the Arts.
It's always great to be talking about arts and culture. And today, we're following up on a presentation we did a year ago, to where we outlined plans to advance the Tempe Center for the Arts in terms of its programming, in terms of making or continuing to make it a buzzing art center that also deepens a sense of connection and belonging within our community. And really delighted to be able to take, give you an update on some of the wonderful things that have been occurring. So, as we know, arts and culture is part of creating quality of life here in our beautiful city, and we do that through 3.16 and 1.7. The quality of the cultural center itself is an experience, but also, of course, the programs that we put into that center. In 2015, the city worked with residents, artists, and other stakeholders to develop an arts and culture plan, and that plan remains much relevant to it still. We were interrupted with the pandemic. We had a consultant in 2019 review the plan and give some implementation recommendations. We achieved many positive things in the plan, but there's still some unfinished business. And we have condensed that into a series of strategies. These four strategies you see here before you are related to our programs. So we seek at Tempe Center for the Arts to advance opportunities for creative learning at all stages of life. We seek to support our artists to do their most vibrant work and in different ways provide support to them and the companies they work with. Of course, we create that sense of belonging and connection for many different communities and individuals through the center. And we amplify those things that are most distinctive about who we are here in Tempe and project that through the programs that we do as well. So today, Eileen will be taking the scene forward for us. Just to set it, Eileen will give you some, a quick overview of what the programming model is at TCA, focus on some of the key areas of growth that we've seen over the past year and going forward, touch on one business consideration, and then conclude with some data that reflect the successes that we are seeing. So, over to you, Eileen.
Thank you, Brendan, and thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and council for the opportunity to update you today. First, I'd like to begin with an overview of the types of programs that TCA produces and presents each year. Okay, thank you. We may have a technical issue, Jason.
The arrow is not operating. Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Next slide, please.
It just wants to stay on Samara Joy because it was such a beautiful evening for the community.
It's like, literally, his presence alone unfroze the screen. It was like, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Jason. So, TCA works to create public value by attracting, supporting, investing, and delivering arts activities. The programming outcomes are achieved through mechanisms that include three different areas in our programming model. The first is securing rental clients. So renting the venue to organizations and providing baseline venue services such as production labor, ushers, and basic marketing services allow us to really support not only arts organizations within our community, but those that also want to produce educational programs as well as business social events. So, for example, the local organization that is a nonprofit LGBTQIA organization called One in Ten holds their annual fundraiser each year at TCA to record numbers. Secondly, we look at partnerships and collaborations. By co-investing with other organizations to develop, promote, and/or deliver arts and cultural activities for mutual strategic return, we find that we are able to have a more enriching environment for our audiences and community. This will include our resident companies, so Stray Cat Theater currently, as well as funding through community arts grants such as Black Theater Troop, or other collaborations such as our partnership with Arizona Storytellers. And lastly, our own self-presentations. So while building a performance or exhibit from the ground up, so this is producing, or paying for an existing show, i.e. buying in, these approaches involve full responsibility for marketing that show and often involve the taking the risk on selling the tickets and to recover part or all of our costs. So, for example, as you saw on the slide before, we did present Grammy Award winner Samara Joy back in September to a sold-out audience. The ultimate goal is to balance the mix of different approaches as this helps us to build a flourishing arts ecosystem that is rich and resilient. This involves management of calendar bookings in a complex and constantly changing mix. TCA staff must consider opportunities for revenue generation, as well as booking of free programs, inclusion of diverse voices, as well as shows with wide popular appeal. The goal is to prioritize this cultural activity so that it aligns with the purpose of the arts and culture tax, while also juggling the request to deliver non-arts events and ensuring availability of skilled production and usher labor to meet the needs of constantly changing and evolving calendar. There are seven key areas from programmatic growth that have advanced significantly in 2023 and represent key directions for our continued focus. Arizona Theater Company, as you know, is now officially our partner organization and has opened their season to record numbers. In fact, they have had an audience growth of over 38% of new audience members since moving to Tempe. TCA staff has also been conducting a resident company program refresh. The goal is to create an engaging experience for our local arts organizations by creating mutually beneficial return. Our family programs are expanding, and we are offering both free activations for families as well as ticketed events. Leaning into Indigenous arts in a special event space, we have had a number of events celebrating Indigenous and Native culture. In fact, our 48 Live program is attracting attention from Arizona PBS, and we are in a conversation with them regarding their program Playlist 48. In addition, we held our first-ever Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration in collaboration with a local organization Cultural Coalition. We welcomed over 600 people in attendance as we celebrated Latin American indigeneity. And finally, continuing our mission of creating a sense of belonging, we commissioned Arizona Storytellers of Arizona Republic to create their first-ever bilingual storytelling show. This resulted in a key audience growth of Spanish-speaking audiences at TCA. Other business considerations, so food and beverage. So the staff at TCA is continuing to work with the center's exclusive caterer to ensure the best quality in food and beverage practices and service. New food and beverage menus are currently being explored, as well as ways of activating the lounge and patio spaces on non-event days. In 2023, as part of an whole-of-the-division approach, TCA commenced rolling out a new audience survey and analysis tool to capture data and generate meaningful insight about audience motivations, satisfaction, and impact. These insights are now beginning to inform the development of future programs and decisions about marketing and venue experience. You'll see here that between June and August of 2023, TCA surveyed 95 patrons attending a cross-section of about eight different rental, partner, and self-produced and presented events. This data set that you see is based on these responses and indicates that TCA is exceeding the city's gold standard of 90%, a satisfaction across the four areas that audiences were asked to rate. Further surveying of patrons will continue on a rolling basis throughout our season. The following table summarizes the actual number of activations in FY '23 and provides targets for the following two years. The number of annual venue activation serves as an indicator of how the city is maximizing public return on investment in TCA infrastructure and programs. So what is an activation? This can include performances, workshops, community celebrations, city events, rehearsals, and other public bookings. These activations occur in a range of spaces that include the use of the main theater, the studio, the north patio, our sculpture garden, and our east breezeway. Now, you'll notice that, I just want to point out some key observations. You're going to notice that we exceeded our target in FY '23, and there isn't anticipated growth in activations across the programming system over the next three-year period. Significant increase in partnership activations beginning in FY '24 due to our Arizona Theater Company announcement and partnership. There will be an increase in resident company activations due to the refresh of the program that I just told you about that will inject new investment into the local arts ecosystem. And sustaining and growing external rental opportunities that bring a mix of arts activation and other forms of commercial and community return, while also balancing how we do our TCA gallery exhibits to provide additional activations throughout the year above and beyond the supplied data. But really, the most important thing is like, why do we do what we do at the TCA? We do what we do to provide a community with resources, to provide a community with memories, and how did our events make our audiences feel? And this is my favorite slide, but it really makes them feel happy and engaged and connected to both Tempe and to the TCA. And we're really excited to be able to reply to that. So wink, wink. We have lots of upcoming shows and exhibits for you to enjoy. I hope you'll join us. I just want to point out, too, that I think you might actually really like and be excited about. We have ATC's Scrooge, which is going to be a readaptation of a musical, old, you know, Christmas Carol story. It'll be really, really fun. We've already seen some images from their performances in Tucson. Absolutely stunning set design and performances. We hope you'll join us. And we have our first-ever collaboration with the local business, OXDX, and they will be having a native holiday market that we've been partnering with them on, on December 16th. So we hope that you'll join us for those events.
Thanks, Eileen. And just in conclusion, I hope you can see from this presentation that the last 12 months have been extremely busy at TCA, and I just wanted to say a big thanks to Eileen and team for that. It's been a big lift, but as we can see, it's been well worth it, in my opinion. We are very much cutting a path over the next few years to keep growing that sense of buzzing, as I keep saying, this is a buzzing art center, and deepening a sense of connection and belonging. And as these programs keep bearing fruit over the next few years, we'll see that more and more. Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Sounds good. Thank you for the presentation. I've got a few hands here. I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Hodge.
Hello. Thank you for the presentation. It was awesome, and I'm so excited about TCA. I worked on TCA before it was even built, and it was a project that I helped shepherd through the whole process, and I'm so proud of that facility, and the acoustics are incredible. So to see this finally be activated, I've been waiting for this for, I think, 17 years, 18 years maybe. So this is really exciting. You two are doing an amazing job under, and you really took on quite a situation that I'm, a complicated situation. So I'm very proud of the work that you two have done. I have a few questions. My main concern is the exclusive, the exclusive contract with the caterer. For years, I've filled with complaints about the caterer and the situation, and as of yesterday, I've filled it more. So I don't think that having one contract, one caterer is, really works with our competitive system that we have in our country, and I think we should look at a RFP, Request for Proposal, to investigate more than one caterer at this, at this site. So I just, I feel very strongly about it, and also, I'm very excited to see Scrooge, and I encourage everyone to come out and see Scrooge. The stage is really a nice size for Scrooge, so they're going to be able to have a lot of different players going on and things happening all at the same time. So I will be there for Scrooge. And thanks again for your amazing work. Keep up the good work, and if you can maybe respond to my question about the RFP, that would be great.
Thank you.
With regard to the RFP, perhaps I could pick up on this, certainly just to reflect what you're saying, is that food is a really important part of the, and beverage is an important part of the venue experience. We know that it's part of the golden three at art centers with restrooms and parking. And so we've been through a few different models over the, over recent years to explore how to get this, you know, in the best offer for the public. The last year, we've trialed an exclusive cater arrangement, as you've outlined. Certainly, we are continuing to take feedback from the public and the clients about the current model. One of the key challenges that we're trying to work through is most business, currently we outsource the operation of the bars. They are not as commercially viable for external entities as the catered side of the business, and it's, we've sought to attach the two together to make the offer more attractive to people to apply for the RFP. We, but we're looking back into that now, Vice Mayor, to, we're considering our options there to work with procurement about how to go forward. The current exclusive cater contract is due for review in March next year, so it's a timely question leaning into that.
Is this the same caterer that we've had for a number of years, or it's a different one?
It's a different one. Yep, they were part of our preferred list, and then they did apply for the RFP and got the RFP, so.
Okay, and do we have any constraints as far as, like, if they, they have to meet a certain goal, or they, they, we can hold them accountable for the RFP?
I think the accountability measures are obviously very important, and part of the procurement process will be to review the quality of service delivery. I think one of the challenges that clients sometimes ask about is why am I not able to make choices? And it comes back to that business model that if we have a range of caterers out there in the marketplace, it's hard to secure someone separately to run the bars, given the volatility post-pandemic of audiences, and they, it's a business that someone running a bar has no control over the risk of how many audiences are attending or not. So they really want to have the catering business as well as the bar to make it viable for them. But perhaps we can look in some, I think there's some other models we've been considering, more a preferred caterer with some other options, maybe it could be a hybrid version. Happy to look into further those models.
Okay, that'd be great, because I just, it's just not working, you know, and I've just heard these complaints for so long, and obviously, we've got some problems, so, and I know you guys will find solutions. That's the beautiful thing.
That's it.
So I appreciate that, and maybe, you know, even, I know bartenders can be, it can be a situation, but it may be having, like, part-time city employees be the bartenders. I'm just trying to think outside the box so we can kind of make this work. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was excellent, and it's good to see you. And it's nice to see, too, that you're using a lot of different diverse, you know, just focusing on one, you know, one or two populations that you're, you're looking at, supporting all of them. So, thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, thank you. Following what the Vice Mayor said, I was going to say something exactly similar, but not as a little bit different. I think that we, I want to broaden our horizon when we come to diversity, because I know we do something with the African-American, the theater, but we are not doing a lot with the African-American community. So I want us to be able to do more in diversity when it comes to what Tempe looks like. So I just want us to look outside the box and make sure that we're not leaving someone out of it. And also, you know me, I'm going to go back to students. I also want some, I know we have some gear towards our students, but I would like to see more gear towards our students when we come into it also at TCA, too. And, and the presentation is phenomenal. We're doing a great job, but I also believe we can do better. We can go out and we can be more diverse, because we need to make, we need to make sure Tempe looks like what Tempe looks like when it comes down to diversity. So I do get that conversation a lot. I get a lot of, well, I don't see a lot of things happening in the African-American community unless it's through an African-American organization. So I would like to see not just Af-, not just African-American, but just in general, every pop, everybody feels like they're included, inclusive in our, in our city. So that's just one thing I would like to look into more, especially our children. They are the future. Thank you so much. The great presentation was phenomenal.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Let me next go to Councilmember Garland, and then Councilmember DeVaro.
I love listening to what you just said about the Arizona Theater Company's numbers going up 38%. That's incredible. And it was, it's good, because when they came here, you know, they were taking a leap of faith of coming to some community that's absolutely, a location that's absolutely gorgeous and bringing their whole community here. They were taking a really good leap of faith, and they trusted you, and, and it paid off. So I'm really happy to hear that. I love the programming. I've been to shows, performances there. You guys have done a great job. I love how activated that TCA is. I love what you have done there. I think your, your, the other performances that you have there outside of the Arizona Theater Company have been a lot of fun. But I did notice that you forgot a really big one that you guys provided for was when President Biden was here, and you guys had to do something completely different than you have ever had to do before, and you were able to host such a large group there. There was so much security. You guys did an excellent job. You've made us all look really good in the eyes of the country. So thank you so much, and again, you guys are doing a great job. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember DeVaro?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. First of all, thank you for the presentation. That's great information, the data, how you guys are strategically making success out of that area is impressive. I mean, obviously, when you talk about the arts, it's, it's about breaking even, you know, trying to, you know, provide the best services possible, and hopefully, we do that. And it seems like we're trending that way, which is kind of cool, and I'm very pleased at how that's going. I agree with everything that's been said by the other council members, kind of with Councilmember Hodge and Vice Mayor Adams. The, you know, how we attract more people, how we get the right people, how we get that their verification is great. But one thing I've also noticed is, you know, that area of the lake, you know, going down to the west, eventually, things are going to start to happen. But as you can see, in most days, even on the weekends, when nothing's happening, there is people utilizing that lake, and utilizing, you know, just walking, running, having families out, going by the art center, utilizing the bridge, other side of the lake. The lake is starting to develop more traffic, and then eventually, we're going to be, you know, the water stuff, the water cabs, and, and people utilizing more of the rentals and things like that. That's, you know, now, it's starting to heat up, but we don't have signage for those restaurants of who's, who do you utilize them. Making that outdoor area visual and attractive. I think that we're missing an opportunity of the signage, the visual attraction, and utilizing that outdoor space to attract people as they walk by, and the type of services we might have, you know, maybe that's that morning of having that brunch, or the evening of having that happy hour atmosphere. I think that we could probably do a better job on making that vibe a little more attractive, more visual, so that people can see it. If they see it, they'll come back to it and visit it. So I think, I would love for us to look into that on, on the city side, our side, the theater side, on how we can make that a little bit more attractive as people are walking by and more inviting to walk in, and not looking so, do I go in this way or that way, or, you know, that kind of thing. So I think that if we could, could we look into that, or is there any thought on that, I guess?
Yes, I think it's great feedback. I think that the lake is activating, you know, it's an opportunity that we can continue to tap in more and more, and if I'm hearing you right, council member, you know, part of that is about the storytelling outside and the sense of invitation to come inside. We're also looking at some free outdoor programs that kind of, through music, through art, if you like, outdoors, say, this is an art center, you know, come and be curious, discover something free, and then sort of go deeper. But yes, so happy to look into some approaches to that as we move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you're right, you're hitting it. I mean, that, you have that live music ability, you have that, even if it's as small as an acoustic, you know, single person, I mean, it's just, I think we got more to tap into, and I love the potential.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
I just have one other idea. I know we, as councilmembers, we all support it. Maybe, you know, we all have newsletters and stuff. Maybe we can start, if you give us blurbs to put in, maybe we can even help you to put the word out there. If you need something, like, she's talking about more, you know, more catering, maybe just, just the word of mouth. And us as councilmembers, we have a strong word of mouth, because we were out there in the community. So give us the information to kind of help to spread it around, because, you know, I would not mind doing a breakfast of berdette at TCA to give all the, some, you know, like, not just the look of it, but just to help bring more people into it. So whatever we need to do to help, make sure you use us in that capacity, because we're supposed to be the public's vision, right? I'm talking for my council members, but maybe I'm just talking for me, but, but I, okay, I'll put it this way, I would like to do more into helping and bringing that vision to light, you know, so let me know how I can help.
Appreciate that offer. We'd love to take you up on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I had, I had one question that'll go to Councilmember Garland about booking for the TCA. Obviously, I'm super excited about ATC being, you know, making the TCA their new home for all of their shows. One of the things I was sort of wondering, too, is, and I thought about this being out of town over the weekend and having a chance to be in Atlanta and see at the Tabernacle Big Boy, who's one half of OutKast, the, has the biggest-selling hip-hop album of all time, 13 million copies, which is over 20 years old now, which makes me feel very old. But one of the things I was wondering sometimes, too, about kind of drawing in even more top 40 acts, you know, people of that nature who, at one point, 20 years ago, you couldn't have gotten an OutKast to play a much smaller venue. But at this point in time, sort of 20 years passed, they still have really core followings of people, you know, people like myself who still listen to their music, and yes, I have listened to the Andre 3000 Flute album many times on repeat. But I wonder sometimes about the ability to bring in artists such as those, because they're now sort of catering to folks like myself who are in their 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, you know, people of that nature who also, though, are still following the artist, but also even have more disposable income than they would have had 15, 20 years ago. You know, back then, going to a show of that nature probably would have been cost prohibitive for me, but now I'm in a place where I probably could have. There was an artist that I've been tracking since I was an undergrad. I would have the ability to still, to go to their show, and I would still love to see them perform a lot of their greatest hits. So I'm just wondering, do we have the ability, or is that any kind of a focus of ours right now at the TCA, to lure in some of those acts who might be sort of 10, 15 years beyond at the height of their popularity, but obviously still have a very dedicated following the artist, but also even have more disposable income than they would have had fifteen, twenty years ago. You know, back then, going to a show of that nature probably would have been cost prohibitive for me. But now I'm in a place where I probably could have. There was an artist that I've been tracking since I was an undergrad. I would have the ability to still to go to their show, and I would still love to see them perform a lot of their greatest hits. So I'm just wondering, do we have the ability or is that any kind of a focus of ours right now at the TCA to lure in some of those acts who might be sort of ten, fifteen years beyond at the height of their popularity, but obviously still have a very dedicated fan base?
Yep, absolutely. So to address that directly, so part of one of the goals is regional distinctiveness. And so we do want to make sure that we are having a few programs a year that are of that higher caliber instead of, you know, we're trying to be a space for community, a space for emerging artists, but we definitely want to make sure that we're having those kind of top forty. There's a there's one thing to consider is, you know, the balancing and the risk because the house is only five hundred and sixty-two seats. And normally, those artists are at Chandler, and Chandler's about fifteen hundred seats. So the money that we can get back from ticket sales. So we spend a lot of time evaluating our forecasting budgets to make sure that we're balancing resources with the qualitative aspects and impact that it would have on the community. But that is definitely part of our overall strategy and goal, our three-year strategy at TCA is to start to create more audiences around, you know, that's where you get people in the door to appreciate those other more artistic kinds of pieces that you want to present is through those kind of top forty acts and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. Because and I appreciate, I mean, you're both, as everyone set up here, you're both doing a phenomenal job running the facility. And, you know, to Councilwoman Hodge's point, I agree. It's one of those things where every time I go in that building and we're having some kind of an event, and I ask people, you know, by a show of hands, can you show me how many people, this is your first time in the Tempe Center for the Arts? And always like one third to one half of the hands go up. And it's always like, gosh, I want people to see this building. It's a beautiful facility. It's really a jewel in the city of Tempe. And I want to make sure we can do everything we can to bring more people out to experience everything the TCA has to offer. So, you know, just one of my ideas that was sort of bubbling in my head after this past weekend's concert. But once again, you're both doing a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the presentation. Councilwoman Garland?
My question was answered.
Oh, okay. Cool. Yeah, Vice Mayor Adams?
Just a real quick question. I know that you talk about the Arizona Theater Company and More Family Program. Where was this survey conducted? Like, how did you get the feedback about what people wanted, the list?
For the audience satisfaction surveys?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah. So the Arts and Culture Division has commissioned an arts data consultant who works nationally and even globally to design a survey methodology with us that works right across arts and culture that helps us understand three things: satisfaction, motivation, and impact. And it's we've got a we're starting to out on this journey. That's the first wave of data. We'll keep surveying. It's a data-rich dashboard. And the most important thing is we use the insight from it to translate to learn and adapt. And so this next couple of years, you will start to learn and adapt in response to that data.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate it. And I just want to also just circle back with Arizona Theater Company coming to our beautiful facility. That is a really big deal. I mean, they they chose us over everyone else. And it's, you know, people sometimes don't realize what, you know, I mean, we have Tony Award winners, you know, even that company, working with our, I mean, it's incredible. So I'm I'm super excited about it. So thank you again for your presentation and your feedback.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else need further comments or questions? Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, item 3B, accessory dwelling units zoning and development code update. But first, I've got speaker speakers on that item. I've got three cards in front of me. Once again, I will call those speakers in the order in which the cards were received this evening. And the first speaker I have is Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Ann Till, Tempe resident. Just want to say on TCA, I love it. Want more of that. Agree with Coria and Artist. Mem does it. Love ATC, but current concerts don't draw me. So then to ADUs, Tempe neighborhoods are being torn apart. ADUs are just another way to destroy neighborhoods and are contrary to neighborhood preservation. The survey, just throw it away. Only two hundred and one responses with nearly two hundred thousand Tempe residents. A fraction of a percent. Not effective. We must do better. Limiting polling makes vulnerable the survey vulnerable to special interest groups. So skewed results with their networking. That is, they got survey takers. The survey was a push-pull based bias for those wanting ADUs. The meeting's very short notice and not fair in this narrow holiday. Presentation focused with survey questions instead of essential info. Who is pushing these ADU changes? One side is coming to the table with clearly defined but not publicly stated objectives. But residents are confused and being asked questions with no understanding. The city needs to ensure that residents, not just a few, understand whether ADUs are practical and how code changes impact neighborhoods. So what's missing in the conversation? While separate family member units are already allowed in owner-occupied homes, and residents have no idea on ADU costs, but affordability is a survey question. Before making policy changes, start with clarifying. Can an average homeowner afford to build? Who could? And what are construction costs? And how affordable are ADU rental rates versus other? City, my ask, create cost tables. Table one showing build cost, rental rates, unit size versus return on investment for both cash and finance builds. Table two showing for each proposed ADU type, costs for sewer water, electrical, IC, architects, et cetera. Note that web searches consistently show average ADU build cost at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. And what issues do single-family neighborhoods already have? College rentals, tons of maxed-out rentals owned for many years by the same owners. Constant problems, parking traffic, garbage parties, late-night noise. More units, more problems. Landlords and renters don't care. Short-term rentals, reduced housing. Constant events, noise, traffic, parking, no more plays. And allowing multiple units encourages investor buys and many problems. And what building codes may change? These hurt neighborhoods and need more explanation. Building close to the street changes could reduce effectiveness of variance process, which protects neighbors and allows some say. But anyways, in summary,
Ten more seconds.
The city should start over, provide the right information to ensure that residents understand whether ADUs are practical and how code changes impact neighborhoods. This requires much more than reserving. Thanks.
Thank you, Miss Till. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Jana Grunio. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, all. Jana Lynn Grunio. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona, for many, many years now, over thirty. So I just want to echo what my neighborhood activist colleague previously said regarding exploring going back to the ADU exploration. I think we need to go back to square one. I did write you all a couple of times a long reason with all the details. I'm not going to go into that right now. But basically, I don't think what we're doing right now is working, the survey and the outreach. I think there needs to be more to that. I also think that there is confusion regarding guest housing and accessory dwelling units. And let me go back real quickly to outreach. I did a couple of posts on Next Door, and on one, I got just under a thousand views. Another one, I got eight hundred and some. And this is from sitting on my couch. So I think the city with a concerted effort could do much better than that. To more echo about preserving neighborhoods and looking at what the affordable housing options are, I don't think you should pit one against the other. For many of you I know have been in Tempe for a while, I personally can't afford to move. So I'm they're taking me out feet first in my house. Okay, I can't go anyplace. So I'm very invested in my neighborhood and the quality of life. I have a rental in front of me and next to me. They're great kids now, but all the rentals have not necessarily have been that good. And I'm talking five people, you know, in a house, another five in all the cars that go with it. And they're good kids that are there now. But again, they haven't always been good. And where I live, it's not an HOA, so I don't have any deed restrictions. So when you start looking at who can do accessory dwelling units and who can't, I think that's a consideration to look at if there's some kind of inequity going on there. So in summary, I think we need a comprehensive approach that looks at both issues, preserving the neighborhoods and affordable housing. And just to suggest, you know, as we think of all the Kennedy shows that are out there choosing to go to the moon, we went to the moon. We can figure this out, you know. And many of you know, I've worked for the government for many years. So I don't know the context and how this is being done, or how it's being driven, or whatever. But I am in deep sympathy with the staff because I have been there. And I'm asking for you all to go back and look at that again. There are resources out there, professional, not to say our staff is not professional, but to look at conflict management and problem solving.
Ten more seconds.
Look at conflict management and problem solving and framing the issue and looking at both sides. So I suggest that you see what else is out there. Thank you for your time and happy Turkey Day to you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have, and I apologize if I get this incorrect, it's Krista Makepeace Smiley. I probably but the chuckle, I probably got it wrong. So I'll just.
Good evening. It's Krista Makepeace, M-A-K-E-P-E-A-C-E.
All right.
Smiley. Thank you. Mayor, honorable members of the council, I'm just briefly, first off, I wanted to say the arts in this community is amazing. Okay, my husband and I relocated here about five years ago. So our son lives here, and my sister-in-law lives in McCormick Ranch area, which is ruined. They they're not like Tempe. They're not being really proactive in their growth. And that's what I'm here to speak to you about tonight. But I wanted to tell you that Tempe Jam was amazing. Okay, the Art Friday is amazing. I try to take I try to go to all of them, and I take my grandchildren to them. The diversity in this community is phenomenal. Okay, I have a lot of native background, and that's why we came to Tempe because it's a city that is beautiful. It can be a little more diverse, in my opinion, as far as Native American and African American, but you guys are doing good. With that said, I just wanted to speak about the livable community I saw in here, which I'm not quite sure if it's really on the agenda, but it is the Twenty Minute City. And I am just worried because I don't want anybody to rush and do things. I want you to really have a solid plan when you move forward in this because it affects all of us Tempeans that live here, and it affects the disabled population that has to move around or has to move around freely. So I want you to think outside the box when you move forward with that agenda because that's a big deal. And I know you need to grow the city. I know because I was a councilwoman. I get this. So I know you need to move. You're landlocked. You are really landlocked here. So whatever you do in growth, please think it through and really bring it forward. An idea for your, you know, surveys, I don't know, maybe when you go to these art things, you have someone there that can hand out because a lot I always fill them out. I go to your webpage. I am really invested in the city. But I think a lot of people just they don't even know until it's too late. So and they should have a voice, too. And I know you want them to. They just sometimes people don't know how to access the information. And I know that you guys are all about transparency and really keeping all your residents informed. So with that, I just encourage you, when you go, to think about the Twenty Minute City. What does that mean, really? I mean, to me, it it sounds ideal because I came from a landlocked area. But I know if you don't do it right, you ruin the community. So thank you to all of you. Have a wonderful holiday and take care.
Thank you. You too. Have a great holiday. Perfect. All right. Are there any other speakers in the audience on item 3B? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none. I see Ryan and Jeff standing up, so I will bring them up right now.
We're ready for you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Jeff Tamilevich. I'm the Community Development Director. I'm with Ryan Lubeck, who is the Community Development Deputy Director of Planning. Tonight, we're here to talk about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and sort of provide you with an update, you know, from the last four years. Ryan's going to speak to you a little bit about sort of how we got where we're at today and what we're going to be requesting from you in terms of how you want us to move forward. I will say that we appreciate all the comments that were made tonight, you know, if council recommends us to move forward with more investigation. We look forward to having communication with all the residents and hearing those concerns and being able to somehow address those concerns as well. So, Ryan?
Thank you, Jeff. So this item closely aligns with Performance Measures 2.15, feeling invited to participate in the city decisions, Performance Measure 3.28, ending homelessness, Performance Measure 3.3, age-friendly community designation, and Performance Measure 4.09, achieving the housing inventory ratio. Additionally, we have other supportive plans for the efforts of accessory dwelling units. In our General Plan 2040, as a land use objective, we look to balance the community with a range of housing types, such as multifamily housing, live workspaces, accessory dwelling units, detached, and attached single-family homes. It's also in our Neighborhood Preservation Objective in the General Plan to allow flexibility in the housing types configurations, such as accessory dwelling units. Housing Objective 1 also identifies a strategy that we are looking to encourage and diversity of housing types, such as accessory dwelling units and other various types of different living housing provided throughout our city. The Affordable Housing Strategy was a plan that was adopted by City Council back in 2019. And then within that plan, there was a strategy to develop a variety of housing types as well. And one of those strategies, C1, was specifically accessory dwelling units. And as stated in that strategy, as the average household size in U.S. continues to shrink, ADUs are an effective way to accommodate smaller household sizes. ADUs can help increase the city's housing stock, which is especially important in built-out cities that lack vacant land. Similarly, there are other strategies within the housing plan, micro units and tiny houses, and they also play a role in this housing type for accessory dwelling units. So the presentation overview, we'll provide the objective of the proposed text amendment, go over what an ADU is, discuss the current Tempe regulations for ADUs, discuss our public engagement summary that we had just wrapped up in October, the online survey responses, and then get guidance and consideration from City Council on whether to move forward or not. And then with that concurrence, we'll find out if what the next steps in timeline process may be from that guidance. So the objective of the protest text amendment, we're specifically asking council tonight is if you so decide to, whether we move forward on requesting City Council guidance to prepare further research and analysis. We know we're not done yet. No, there's more research and study that needs to be done on different types and various types of regulations. We have opportunities to reach out and talk to other communities that have had ADU regulations in the past, and basically develop the additional public outreach process timeline that we can really get down into the nitty-gritty of the language and discuss actual draft language that might be appropriate for Tempe in our zoning and development code, and then be able to address those topics through public hearing process. The city right now has ADU section within the zoning and development code. And so we're looking at the possibility of expanding ADU regulations. There are various types of single-family zoning districts throughout the city, from AG and R115, which is based on the lot size of the requirement, all the way down to an R1PAD, which is a unique smaller lot for a single-family home on a property. This comprises about thirty-nine percent of the total land area within Tempe, and it's our largest land use category. Staff will continue to work with research on ADUs and gather input as part of that overall process. So we want to ask and provide the input. Not many people know what accessory dwelling units are, so we're here to provide you a variety explanation of an ADU. An ADU is an independent, separately rentable dwelling unit. It's intended to be rented with a standalone single-family home. You might see the accessory dwelling unit as a detached unit product there on the upper left, or it might be attached to the main residence. It might be above a garage, or it might be an interior basement of a home. It might be a It might be a converted portion of the garage that might also be attached to the home, or it might be an upper second-floor addition to the house. Various different types of ADUs. Here is an example of a large lot detached ADU that has the primary residence on the property, but then you have a separate rentable unit that's on the side of the property that has that land area that can accommodate that space. This shows an example of a detached AD unit on a smaller lot, possibly in the back of the yard or probably accessible to an area where there might be an alley for having alternative access points to the property. Here is an example of an ADU that's an interior converted garage AD unit, so using a portion of the house that might be occupied for separate residency while still using the primary residence as, as the main family unit. So we want to look into some of the perceived benefits of ADUs too, and recognize there have been reports and studies out there about ADUs. They look at increasing communities' affordable housing stock with providing an alternative, smaller housing unit type. They add incremental density within the city while encouraging and maintaining the characteristics of the neighborhood. One element to bring home, note that the city of Tempe has currently an ADU regulations. We created that because we knew that some of our older aging housing stock and subdivisions had multifamily zoning. So this was a way of introducing ADUs to preserve that character, maintain the, the primary residence, and to be able to add a subordinate second unit with that property. So the key importance here is that the primary residence must be retained. It also provides opportunities for supplemental income for homeowners. ADUs for current Tempe regulations today, so our AD regulation was adopted in 2019. This allowable ADUs in Tempe on properties had to be zoned multifamily. You see here on the, on the image on the right, the yellow highlighted areas shows properties that have multifamily zoning within existing, single-family use. Not too many properties throughout the area, approximately around 250 properties. But the, the development standards for, for those regulations allowed a maximum 800-unit ADU that was one per lot. No additional parking was required, and you can have no more than two bedrooms. Some of the neighborhoods that took advantage of this, of this process was areas in like Maple Ash and Wilson Arts and Gardens. We've had about five total completed permits today and about two more are in process at this time. Here you see some examples of some of those ADU units that have either access off the alley or access from a second corner street from their property. So if we introduced ADUs to all other single-family areas, these are properties that could possibly be eligible with establishing certain criteria and regulations that would be specific to ADU regulations for single-family properties. So approximately 29,800 total parcels throughout the city of Tempe. We wrapped up a public engagement process with our Neighborhood Services Division over this October period, from October 16th to October 30th. There were postcards sent out to residents, businesses, and property owners in Tempe. We had email notifications, Neighborhood, Homeowner Association contacts. And then we had an email notification that was sent out to subscribers through the City News. Staff also created a city webpage with online survey and information about the public meetings that we held. So in our first public engagement meeting, we had a well attendance on October 16th, 57 attendees headed to the Tempe Public Library. We went over topics of the survey and provided just general comments and inputs about what people's thoughts were about the ADU regulations, whether it was positive for or against ADUs. And then discussed those comments and concerns. We also had a similar public meeting Zoom attendee meeting with 43 attendees the following day. And then public survey was 201 responses that we collected over a two-week period. We also had a request from the Neighborhood Advisory Commission to provide them an update and overview on the ADU public discussion topic. And they actually made a motion to vote 7-3 to see us proceed with a draft ADU process for next steps.
Quick thing, Ryan, just on the point about the public survey, the 201 responses, can you talk about what the tenor of those responses was?
Yeah, certainly. We had a wide variety of public participation. The attachments in your reports, the memos, show a wide diversity of outreach to various different residents in areas in the ZIP codes, a good group number from each ZIP code, and good categories too, from a lot of different age groups as well, from, from 20 up to, you know, 70 years of age.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So within those survey responses, I kind of want to get into some of that information and what was provided. With over 67% of the respondents felt that ADUs will improve the housing affordability so that it's either significantly improving or somewhat improving the housing affordability based on response to this question number three. The other question was asked whether we would like to seek, consider expanding ADU regulations that are allowed, and our overwhelming response was 72.5% that wanted to and 4% that were not sure. We did ask a fallout question to those specifically that said no to this answer and wanted to identify what those concerns were. So we had a list of comments that talked about concerns for density, traffic, parking congestion, and safety. There was also concerns about short-term rentals and the type of problems or nuisances that are derived with short-term rentals. There was also some concerns that came out in the survey as well as in some of the public outreach process about concerns for investors or developers acquiring properties or driving out residents in the community that would want to just build more rentals. Some of our other questions we asked about expanding ADU eligibility based on certain size of lots, whether you had a large lot home in the image example there, or a traditional 6,000-square-foot lot. Majority of the residents, 80%, over 80% in both categories, wanted to see ADUs in both the large lot and traditional, single-family lots. And then we had 7.7% that were not for sure, and then 4.7% said another category. And of those other, 16 out of the 23 comments wanted to see no restrictions on, on the lot size for ADUs. So taking a more broader approach rather than based on a certain size lot. Again, with that question about preference for related sizes of an ADUs, today we have a regulation that allows up to 800 square feet of available space. About 34% of the survey thought that 800 square feet was appropriate. Another 31% said 1,000 square feet. And it was across the board, pretty close in all categories of not sure what type of size limitation they'd want to see with an ADU regulation. But the 1,000 square feet would probably be the largest size example. That's a category the City of Phoenix recently adopted. Their ADU regulations do allow up to 1,000 square feet. Parking requirements was a topic that came up as well. We asked currently additional about vehicle parking, it's not required for ADUs. And then we asked them to please share their preference related to vehicle parking requirements. About 55% said to maintain the current no-on-site parking requirements. And we had another, close to 20% said require at least one designated parking space. And another 7.7% wanted to require at least one space, but also allow potential with a public hearing process. So there, there was a, a group, a percentage of, of this group that were wanting to see some form of parking requirements. And we can see how that might be an area to address concerns related to ADUs and the needs for parking. So looking at these two elements and see what other responses were. The, the primary topic against ADUs was, was the concern for parking and the impacts to those neighborhoods. On question nine, we did talk about short-term rentals. So did you support ADUs being used for rentals of less than 30 days, which is our short-term rental, vacation rental category? An overall response of 53.5% said no, not to use ADUs for short-term rentals. There was 29% thought maybe that might be an opportunity, but only if the primary residence was, was not also a short-term vacation rental. There are the ability to set regulations and establish limitations on short-term rentals. Is that something that's not necessarily out of the question?
So that, that was actually going to be my question, I was going to say. So if there was, if this policy was to go forward, is there a way through our codes that we can ensure that this doesn't happen? That ADUs just don't simply become another form of short-term rental that concerns a lot of our residents?
Yes, yes. If you can add that regulation in there, then you can restrict ADUs from being used as short-term.
Okay.
The property itself can be a short-term rental property, but not individually the ADU.
But not, so, so right, so basically you could, you could have a primary home that you live in, have an ADU on site, but you can't just simply build that or use some kind of prefab home and just say, well, that's going to be a short-term rental that I'm going to create as just a means to generate additional revenue. Like you talked about earlier, you, this might be an additional source of revenue for a homeowner, but strictly if it's being used as really what they used to call a mother-in-law suite. But not, but not just simply to have a home where you could just rent it out so people are getting different neighbors every four or five days.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and we recognize that that was certainly a concern for this. If, if ADUs are looking to address affordable housing and address other housing types, then the use of short-term rentals would certainly take up that, that, that additional housing type option. It would be more limited. We also looked into questions about alternative construction types that you don't normally see in single-family areas. So 63% were interested in seeing alternative construction types. 22% said no, and another 13% were not sure. So we, we provided a list of different housing types and provided some explanations of those. And of those scoring with a five being most preferred and a one being least preferred, the two highest rated ones were tiny home on a foundation or a prefabricated modular home that rated the highest. The more lower rated ones was either manufactured home or a shipping container. And likely, us looking at these ratings is likely because it had something to do with more of the design, concerned with maybe design characteristics within, within an existing neighborhood.
I was going to say, I mean, I, I like shipping container homes, but basically when they're done as part of a, a very well-thought-out planned development. But I could absolutely understand the concern of a resident saying, you're going to now take a shipping container and drop it behind your house or frankly, on the side of the house that looks completely out of character with the sort of, with how the rest of the neighborhood looks. So I could absolutely understand why that ranked a lot lower than the top two options because it probably would for me as well.
Yeah. So considerations for, for code revisions. Overall, I think the, there looks like to be a support for seeing ADUs expanded to single-family districts. So what we'd need to do is take that expansion and look at single-family zoning districts and what regulations could be applied to those areas. Other topics that need further studying, further evaluation, we need to evaluate development standards for ADUs such as parking setbacks, lot sizes, et cetera. Do that research, get public input on those different parameters, and see what ADU development standards work for Tempe. We also need to address the issue of investor-developer concerns for ADUs. So again, doing more research, further public input to get and address those potential concerns about setting up maybe criteria or even having an owner occupancy requirement in our ADU regulations. Is that something that Tempe wants to have? And then other regulations like guest quarters, parking in the front yard concerns, and alley access. There are other areas and topics within the code. Guest quarters is another area that we have that is not an, not a rentable unit. It's having accommodation for guests that's separate or detached from the main residence. So we might need to look at those regulations as well, expand the allowance and see if there's a greater opportunity to, how guest quarters in ADUs might be used interchangeably with one another. And then evaluate those regulations so that we can address those, those public concerns. And then as well, overall, there's opportunities to look at streamlining the process, maybe reduce the barriers. We recognize there could be some significant costs in developing an ADU program in other, single-family areas. So what, what administrative process could we do to help enhance and improve the process? We know that as maintaining, single-family homes, there's still a rebate program that's 100% available to rebate billing permit fees. And then looking and providing research for possibly maybe some pre-approved ADU plans that might be available by the city that can be pre-permitted and save some overall cost in the construction of creating an ADU unit. So with that, we look for requests for City Council guidance on the question of whether we prefer move forward on preparing further research analysis to prepare a draft text amendment and related accessory dwelling units for public outreach and a draft code text amendment. I'd like to hear from council at this time on that request.
Sounds good, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to start here with Councilman Rahaj.
Thank you for the presentation, it was very informative. A lot of my questions were answered. One question I did have is what percentage are we looking to have if we did something like that with ADU, I mean, how much of that? And second off, when we were talking about like communications, did we go to like HOAs, neighborhood associations directly and speak to their presidents and, you know, get the buy-in of our neighborhoods itself and see what their information is? Because I did hear what they're saying, and it is true. If we, just having a small percentage of that, that survey, it kind of, it kind of, it kind of scares me because it's not percent, it doesn't show enough a percent of our community how they feel about it. So I just wonder, is there any way we can dive more deep into that? Go find our presidents of our, of our neighborhood associations that don't have an HOA. Go to the HOAs of ones that we do have and have these conversations with them because these are the people that are going to be affected by it. And if we make the, I want to make the, the, the decision on a clear, full, holistic viewpoint of what our city is looking at in that situation.
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Rahaj, the, we can do more extensive outreach to, to this request. I think we've got some good initial one-on-one comments that we had from some of the public. They suggested us setting up a, a North Tempe, Central Tempe, and South Tempe meetings. And basically just make yourself available to reach out to any, any stakeholder groups, any community members that want to have this conversation dialogue about ADUs and, and address the comments, concerns they have. One thing I'll say too about the, the ADU regulations, although, you know, this can be very widespread and several different zoning districts, several different categories, I guess. One thing that you need to recognize is depending on how you set up those regulations might determine whether or not a property could be eligible for those regulations. So you might have a property that has a, a small backyard and, and their current setbacks just don't accommodate for it. So that might not be an area or location where an ADU would be appropriate. Or someone might be requesting something that say they want to put a second-story version on it. Well, there's a public hearing process, so we have to vet that through the public hearing process to determine whether or not that type of ADU would be appropriate or not. So just some examples that, as we, as if we were to develop the, the regulations to understand what, what properties may be eligible for the criteria.
Thank you so much.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilwoman Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ryan and Jeff. A few clarification questions first. You had mentioned that there's a distinction between guest quarters and ADUs. Can you clarify what that is?
Yes. Guest quarters, you cannot rent independently from the main residence. In ADUs, you can rent independently.
And so the distinction currently is that guest quarters are allowed to be built?
Yeah, we have guest quarter allowances today with properties, lots, 8,000 square feet or more have to comply with the setbacks for the property in the zoning district. And it's basically an independent room with, with living facilities, but it's only intended to allow to provide housing for guests of the main residence. So we have the property owners sign and record a covenant restricting the property from renting that separate guest quarters as well. It can't be used as a, as a short-term rental either.
Okay, thank you. I think that's important to note and clarify as we move forward with the discussion. And so that we do not use those terms interchangeably because they're not interchangeable, right?
Yeah, I think that's going to be part of the discussion as we move forward is if we should use those, not necessarily interchangeably, but I'll just speak from an enforcement standpoint. You know, having guest quarters and then also having ADUs is very difficult from an enforcement standpoint to determine which is which. And there is a point where a guest quarters could cross over into an ADU. And that's what we need to decide, is that appropriate or not?
Right, I, I think as we move forward, we have to be intentional and talk about everything because, you know, one of the primary concerns with Because, you know, one of the primary concerns with a lot of neighbors that I've talked to, in Tempe, we value our neighborhoods and the culture of our neighborhoods. And I, and people are afraid of the short-term rentals and the negative impacts that they may have on the culture of our neighborhoods. So we have to move cautiously as we're having the conversation, but also being clear so people know what we mean, right?
Yeah.
Also, if we move forward, a concern of mine for ADUs would be if we could have some sort of deed restriction. And I know that would entail an ordinance or code, but that the primary residence would need to be owner occupied.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, I thi, I think there's a lot to discuss. I, I think there's a lot more to learn in, in talking to more of our neighbors. And both, also the ones that said yes, they want them. So I think we need to, if we move forward with a conversation, let's be clear. And don't be afraid to go back and ask for re-write clarification on definition, on what we're talking about, so that, one, we're all on the same page, and that people are not unnecessarily disturbed by the conversation. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chin, I, I will say that when it comes to, you know, that last statement where you would support, you know, a resident living in their home, but being able to rent the, the ADU and back, that can't, you know, one of the things that we're trying to promote is that, you know, people should have the ability to downsize as well. So we've spoken to people that would be interested in, you know, renting out their main house and actually moving into the ADU. So that's something that we also want to consider and put on the table in the future, just as long as an owner occupied was on site.
Right, I, I think that's, that's an important distinction. And that takes away from the negative connotation and perhaps the negative behavior of some short-term rental customers, so that the owner is on site. No, I appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, sounds good. Vice Mayor Adams, then Councilmember Navarro?
Yes, thank you, thank you. First of all, great work on this presentation. I know these presentations don't take that long in public, but they take a lot of hours behind the scenes preparing. So I appreciate staff doing such a good job with the presentations and, and making this fairly clear. This, you know, for my undergraduate and master's degree, the sample size seems small for our statistics. And that's, that, that makes me a little bit, a little bit nervous. I just think that maybe we could do more outreach. I know you guys have been doing outreach, but try to increase that sample size and, and so we can have more statistically significant stats on it. So that, that would be something I would recommend. But, I mean, I think that we have a lot of avenues to, to go down this road. And, I mean, I think that they could work in some areas. But I think we need just more, I really want to make sure that we're getting our neighborhood in, input on this situation and, and what they want in the neighborhoods. And maybe some neighborhoods will want them, and some neighbors, neighborhoods will be absolutely no way. And, you know, maybe that's another avenue that we can explore. So, thank you so much, appreciate it. Good job, work.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro, then Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I appreciate you guys and the dedication and the time. I think this is a subject matter that, you know, I was interested in, where as we're holding housing conversations about affordability, about more housing, about housing stock in general, and how, what are some opportunities? What are some, you know, possibilities? The fact that we're exploring it is, is great. It might not be what everybody wants, but the fact that we're exploring it is great. Just as we're exploring everything in, you know, what we do as a city, and affordability, and, and any housing that we want within the city, knowing that we're trying to find solutions and solve problems. So I appreciate the conversation. Yeah, I, I do agree that I think we have to go and kind of have this conversation, you know, a little more broad. I like the fact that you guys say about maybe breaking down into three sections of the city and try to target those sections because they're all unique. I know the job with where we live in, I couldn't even imagine some of those homes having another or a home in their backyards just because it's too small. And that's probably the truth, it wouldn't happen there. But I think that has to be shown or educated or whatever it is. Maybe there are a home or two that could, could accommodate that. But when you see in certain areas, the parking, I think everybody sees like, I think I can relate to, I got five cars right next to me, five people in a house, you know, across the house is the same thing. It's like, oh my God, if another unit goes in here with all the parking, I think that's kind of the things that, yeah, certain areas. Certain areas, I don't think they see that. You know, they might have enough room with their driveway, they might have enough room with their lot, whatever it is. So I think the education, the parameters, the outreach, the, doing the survey lasting a little bit longer. We do have time, I mean, this is not a rush project, so to speak. This is something that I think we can take some steps in making some logical steps with it. But at the end of the day, I think that us talking about it, us having those options, we talked about aging in place, we talked about, you know, mother laws, mothers and fathers, and, and having another unit, you know, as, you know, my parents age and they don't leave Tempe, but yet they want to stay in Tempe, what a great alternative of care. Especially when the, when the healthcare system is at a very fragile place in terms of having care for people and the burnout factor of that. So, you know, there's some stuff that makes sense, and I think it's just appropriate on how we share that information. But I would give kudos to you guys and, and what we're trying to do. At least having the conversation is huge, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge, then Councilmember Garland?
Okay, thank you again. I said it for the first time, but my question is, when, usually when I go to any city for whatever I do, I always sit down with council members and talk about what's going on, what they're doing right, what concerns, what opportunities. So is there any possible way, while we do our research, do we look at other neighbor, or the communities are close to, in line with us, and how they're doing and what regulations they have put in place? What is working, what is not working? So we don't just look within the city of Tempe. We look not even just within the state of Arizona, look, go outside the box and make sure that we have dot every i and cross every t. Because I, when I talked to some Atlanta council members, they were talking about how they were having problems with the, similar to this, but they were renting to family members and it was a problem. So even down to that, how do we discuss if it's a son or a daughter? Is that different, you know, and if they're paying rent, how do they, how do we add that in or whatever, you know, situation? So I just want to look, when we think about this, not just look within our city or within our state, but look outside and see what's working when we look at that too, different communities. Because we don't have to reinvent the wheel sometimes, it's already been invented. We just got to go out and see how it's turning in other areas.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, you're correct. We'll, we'll certainly do a extensive research, both locally within the state as well as outside the state of Arizona. It's been a hot topic recently. Even in the past year of our legislation, there's been talks about potential mandates for ADUs. So we want to make sure that, hey, we can look at Tempe regulations for ADUs and how we can address the concerns that our neighborhoods have with not having to be mandated by, by ADU regulations. So it is a hot topic right now.
Councilmember Garland?
So we just got back from the National League of Cities Conference, where there's 2,700 cities across the nation that attend this conference. There were seven different housing meetings. I was only able to get to three of them and got notes from a fourth one. Housing Stability, New Ideas for Persistent Challenge, Local Actions to Accelerate Housing, Housing Supply Accelerator, Reimagining Commercial Spaces Housing, and so on and so on. I have not fully written all my notes for that, so I can share with anybody else. But ADUs were talked about quite a bit in these meetings and about the benefits and downfalls from those also. But, you know, there are other ideas, I, there's, we've all talked about how important it is for us to get more housing in the city of Tempe. And I know this is one of those ideas that we thought of. I'm glad that we're looking at the information that you've given us already. And I agree with my colleagues that I think that we do need to get some more information on this. Because when I look at items that come before the council, I put myself, I'm, I'm a resident also. And I have to think about if, if I, is this something I would want next door to me? Is this something that I could put in my backyard, that my, I would be able to look my neighbor in the face and say, yeah, how do you like it? That's the person that lives here, and there's extra parking out on the street. I don't, I don't know. I try to put myself in the position of it's not just me voting for what's going to happen in the rest of the city, but what's also going to be, what I would be voting on for my neighborhood also. So I think, I think Councilmember Hodge was right. I think going to the neighborhood associations, HOAs and the NAs that we have right now, I know that there are a lot of areas in the, in the city that do not have either one of those. So that outreach would probably be a little bit different. But I do think she's right about going to those individual meetings and asking, because I think that's really important to hear. There are some neighborhoods that might be all for it and some that don't want that. But I think we need to do more information, because I'm not, as much as I want more housing, as much as I think that this is a good idea, I'm not sure if it's a good idea for Tempe in, in some of these ways right now. So I'd like to see more information. One of the questions that I had for you is, is, so just to be clear, so you had mentioned that right now there's 250 parcels that were available currently that were able to get ADUs?
Based on our current regulations that multifamily zoning with this existing single-family use.
Okay. And so out of those 250 parcels, in the time that we've had available in the Maple Ash area, we've only had seven people that have even requested to do this?
And, and two in the process at this time.
Two in the process, okay. Okay, I just want to be clear on the numbers, because it, I mean, I just, I look at this also as saying that, you know, we may say that this would be a great thing for certain neighborhoods or wherever, but it doesn't mean that everybody is going to be doing them. I was actually thinking, because there was such a request for this, I think when it first came up, that there would be so many more people that would be applying, so that surprised me. So one of the, one of the things I thought of was like, okay, well, maybe we could do this like getting speed humps in a neighborhood. If you want an ADU at your house, and you can go to your neighbors and ask them what they think, but then that would pit neighbors against neighbors, and that wouldn't be a good thing for us to do. But I was just trying to think of other ways that we would be able to do this, that it may not be a blanket across the city. But one question I have, do, so the neighbors, like our neighborhood association, there are certain governing documents that say what we can and can't do at our homes. If they're not very strict, it's a great neighborhood. But if my neighborhood specifically says you can't build that, something like that, an ADU in the backyard, does that take precedence over what the city would say, or does the city overrule that?
Yeah, if your organization, homeowners association, had CCNRs or regulations restrictions, they can be more restrictive than the city is on ADUs, yes.
So, so if the city were to approve this, my neighborhood association documents would be the one that would make the final decision?
That's correct. Yeah, but that would be an enforcement matter for the HOA, but not for the city specifically.
The HOA, not for the city, okay.
Yeah, so they could modify their HOAs at any time.
Okay.
Or their CCNRs, I should say.
The CCNRs, right, right, okay. All right, thank you, thousands of questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to follow up to you.
Councilmember Hodge?
You did say about HOAs, but what if they don't have an HOA? And if they have like a, a president, or how is that, will they, would that neighborhood still over, or would it be the city? You know, I get what you're saying about the HOA, but what if you don't have an HOA and you have, you know, like a president, a vice president, but they also have their bylaws? Would that overproceed it, or would the city decision be the one because it's not a HOA?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, the, the city would then utilize their ordinance to, to enforce those situations? That's correct.
Sounds good. On my point, I mean, so very good conversation, a lot of very interesting points being brought up. And also wanted to thank the staff for all their work and all the residents who've taken part in the conversation. I have somewhat of a different, maybe somewhat of a different approach, not maybe wildly different, but something, different perspective. You know, one of the things that's the most resonant to me is not wanting to create more of a proliferation of short-term rentals. And one of the things I know that Ryan, you talked about, having the ability to put something into an ordinance that would ensure that these weren't just simply going to become short-term rentals, creating more sort of mini, you know, bed and breakfasts or hotels in, in a person's neighborhood. I completely understand that, and that's something that if we did go forward with this kind of policy, I would love to see if we could put in some kind of stipulation to prevent that from happening. Because we already have enough short-term rentals. It's been a challenge all over the state, not just simply in the city of Tempe. And that is something I would like to try to make sure that we can safeguard against. But I, but I do think that looking at sort of the land planning and some of the trends that are going on in the city of Tempe, but frankly throughout in Maricopa County. I mean, Maricopa County is the fastest-growing county in the entire country from a population standpoint. There are a lot of other places in this country that are losing residents. But the, obviously, the state of Arizona and Maricopa County is very quickly gaining those residents. We're estimating from the last note that I saw, probably 70,000 additional residents over the next 10 to 12 years. And we do not have adequate housing for all of those people in all of these categories, affordable, market rate, workforce. And so I do believe that we need to create more housing in all of those categories to ensure that all people still have the ability to live in this community. But so, I mean, but my perspective is, and I'm happy to see if we can go back and continue to get some additional feedback and talk about ways that we might be able to tweak the policy. But I guess sort of my statement of just sort of where I am on this is, I think this is something that we have to get to a yes on. That's just my personal perspective. We, we need more housing. I, I feel like we, when I look, we were actually one of the first cities in the valley, and this is something that's not always captured online, that really did have a very forward-thinking policy when it came to accessory dwelling units. Since then, there have been other communities that are frankly past us, like the city of Phoenix, that from my perspective has a much more progressive policy on ADUs now than we were. But I think that Tempe deserves a lot of respect that I don't think we always get for being one of the first cities that really had a policy trying to look at this and trying to encourage more of this in our community. But I do think that, you know, when we, there was a couple of council members I know talked about, well, where do we sort of stack up when it comes to other surrounding cities that we regularly compare ourselves to when it comes to water and sewer and rates and things of that nature? But I do think that we are now beginning to fall behind other communities. That's, that's not a problem, that happens sometimes, these things move very quickly. But I do think that we need to catch up to where they are. And I think that this is a very viable type of housing, especially if you start talking about the, like the prefab options. I mean, I see a lot of these prefab units that are accessory dwelling units that are absolutely beautiful. But I don't think anyone would have a hard time having that either next to their home or behind their home. They're, they're very nice-looking units. And I think about it all the time, having a father who's 84 years old. And my desire at one point, my father's told me, and he loves me to death, I'm going to see him for Thanksgiving. But he's told me, you know, Cory, I still, as long as I have the ability to live independently, want to live independently, I don't really want to live with my son. But the, having the ability to have him on property with me in a future home that I would own, where I might be in the main house and he might be in the ADU in the back that might be 400 or 600 square feet, allows him to have his independence, but also allows me to watch him as he continues to age and to make sure that I can continue to tend to his needs and his concerns. So, you know, my perspective is I'm, I'm absolutely more than happy to make, to go back and work on some of the things that were raised. Because I think the council members raised a lot of very valid concerns, things that we believe, things that we've heard from a lot of our constituents. But I do believe from a supply standpoint and from just sort of doing, from my perspective, what is the right thing, I think this is something that we eventually have to get to a yes on. Because the housing supply issue in the state, in the city, in this country is a very real challenge. And I think it's something the city of Tempe really has to step up to meet, along with the other 90 cities and towns throughout the state. And I want to, and I want us to continue to be on the forward-thinking kind of progressive edge of this. Anyone else? Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it.
So Mayor, if I could please clarify, so.
Yep.
We can move forward with getting further research, further analysis, draft concepts, and collect that information, collect that feedback from various community stakeholders, interested parties on draft language, and then come back to you all with a future work-study session at a, at a later undetermined date.
Sounds good. Okay, yes, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, real quick, I forgot to, we'll just ignore these next steps. I'd just like to thank the other folks that were working with us on this effort. And Begat, Akari, Michelle Dolke, Lucas Jensen, and our Neighborhood Services folks, Shawna Warner and Brenda Clark, thank you very much. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, next item is called to the audience for committee of the whole items, but there are no items ready for city council direction or status update. So I will close section four and go to item number five. B, that is, council committees in progress, updates as needed. Do any council members have updates on items 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3? All right, seeing that, I'll move to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. But in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like a future agenda item added? Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I would like to add water taxis from the north and south side of the lakes. I think it would be a good way to get it engaged and activated along the, the lake. And I know Councilmember Navarro has, we've talked about this, so not trying to steal his thunder. I know Councilmember Navarro, as we've talked about this, so not trying to steal his thunder. So anyway, I think that would be a good agenda item to, you know, have a presentation on in the future. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Madam City Manager? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Since coming back from the League of Cities, I have seen the difference of what our unsheltered population versus other cities, and I would like for our community to get an update on just recently of how we're, how well we're doing in our city, and just, you know, just to give a report card, because I think we really do have a great report card to tell.
That'd be great.
Sounds great. Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, any other council members, any other future agenda items? That's okay. We got another second here, so we'll see. I will move on then to announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have any announcements this evening. Madam City Manager?
Nothing for me, Mayor.